Many, many, many. Speakers and now getting letters from the same group of people. In the interest of fairness, should we not? Should we read the letters or should we just have them posted?
Um, city clerk. Are all the letters that you're holding um letters regarding Michael Butler?
No. There's a mix of topics.
All right, can you sort out the ones that were likely duplicates, please? And we'll attach them to the record.
Well, I I think as long as they are duplicates of videos, if they're letters that are standalone letters for people that.
And I didn't say I that's what I said.
Track, yeah, do you think we've tracked it all?
I wrote down a lot of names.
I have them all written down while Amy reads, I can um double check the name.
Okay, that would be.
Thank you, I just want to be sure we're being fair to everybody.
Okay, this is from Rachel Bratley. I urge you to continue funding funding crossing guard services for M D U S D Walnut Creek residents. Crossing Guards help to keep the youngest of our learners safe when traveling to and from school. And even some of the parents, the safety of our children needs to be at the forefront of any budget considerations. This is from John Doe. Dear City Council, as a city employee who has devoted many years to serving the city of Walnut Creek, I am disheartened to see that long term cost cutting measures are being proposed for what is a temporary problem. I am also dumbfounded at your extreme reticence to spend down more of the catastrophic reserve. Because an economic shutdown due to a global pandemic is a cata is a catastrophe. Permanent layoffs of your dedicated public servants rather than temporary measures such as furlough days will eviscerate the spine organization and impact city services. Unfortunately, the threat of the proposed layoffs combined with the repeated lack of empathy expressed for the city's employees. Has had a drastic negative impact on employee morale across the organization. As we have seen our work and dedication devalued to nothing more than oblique reference references to F D Es and staff resources. No acknowledgement has been made that a decision to make layoffs will take away. The livelihoods and health insurance of many devoted employees who have served you and the residents of this city so well for so many years. Our face, our faith in the city's leadership has been erased. The actions already taken thus far have deeply hurt the employees of the city of Walnut Creek, and it is imperative that you right this ship and make. Decisions that support the efforts of your dedicated team of public servants rather than making short sighted decisions that will destroy their decades of work. That have made this highly respected organization what it is today. Please first consider all of your other options before putting your employees on the chopping block. Acknowledge their humanity and yours by upholding the city stated mission to promote a progressive workplace where dedicated employees can make a difference. And the city stated vision to be an employer of choice by attracting and retaining employees who are committed to excellence in service. This is from Rick Searship. Dear Council, it has come to my attention that the artistic director Michael Butler has been eliminated due to COVID nineteen and huge city budget cuts. As a longtime patron of Center Rep, I received word that he is asking many actors and donors to write to you or speak to you on his behalf. The intent is to save his job from being eliminated. With the unprecedented times we are living in throughout the world, Michael Butler's response to what millions of Americans are facing with job loss seems selfish and driven by ego. He is not the only one facing this situation. I think it is time for change. COVID nineteen budget cuts or not, we are in a crisis. We do not know when the theater, when theater or big gatherings can return in person with the pandemic, it seems fine financially sound to let him move forward. Broadway announced they are not opening until twenty twenty one, most likely spring of twenty twenty one. The decision to let Michael Butler go is the right choice. I will not be part of any petition to save a job that makes one hundred thousand dollars a year. Plus full benefits as well as being the only city. Employee who has been given housing from the city on city property that is not right in this climate. This is from Walter Davis. Dear City Council, my name is Walter Davis. And my wife and I have been homeowners in Walnut Creek since nineteen seventy one. Our two children, a son and a daughter, both went to the local schools and we have very much enjoyed the almost half century that we have lived in Walnut Creek. We first moved here for the good schools, nice homes, clean streets and safe neighborhoods, and I am happy to say that we will that we still take these all for granted. What we didn't know at the time was that when we moved here, black people weren't allowed to due to redlining. As I learned in the book of The Color of Law, something which I implore you all to read. This was originally done as a requirement of the federal government to secure home loans and finance new subdivisions and was later done through such actions as real estate agents. Not showing black people homes in white neighborhoods and intimidation by neighbors and the police. My wife and I benefited unfairly when we bought our house and we continue to benefit unfairly now, all because we are white. Now that I am seventy three, I can say that I am ashamed, excuse me, that what? That I didn't know then what I do know now. But at least I can say that I've learned and what I have learned makes me angry to see my own police department firing rubber bullets and tear gas at peaceful protesters. And my own city council increasing funding to support these illegal actions by the police. While cutting funding for community development and the arts and laying off those employees. I was once like you ignorant to my white privilege, but I have opened my eyes, won't you? This is from Ken Nader. Adam Mayor and council members, I want to talk about the potential elimination of the assistant planner position and the effect that will have on the city's ability to efficiently deliver services. The planning division is to a large extent self sustaining as the development community pays for our services. The C E D department has done a phenomenal job creating, promoting and implementing the blueprint for success. A program that has helped to change our way of thinking with respect to the entire development process. As you know, the blueprint has been well received and applauded by the development community and by the entire city council. The blueprint has won statewide recognition recognition and awards. As a result, other cities have shown interest in emulating our efforts. We should all be very proud of that. With consideration of eliminating a planning division position, the blueprint and our efforts to implement it will be severely hampered. This at a time when this department should be in a position to be to hit the ground running. We just recently became fully staffed. And are now in a position to fully implement the blueprint. In my humble opinion, we will be unable to do so with or without our without our assistant planner. I implore you to consider all alternatives presented to you. The city is important to me. My parents both graduated from Los Lomas. I was born and raised here. I have chosen to build my thirty three year. Career here with the city of Walnut Creek Planning Division. My family lives here. I am so proud of the planning division. I am so proud of the team that we have painstakingly assembled. Current planners have recently shepherded through some very large projects. No one is sitting back on their laurels. A fully staffed division allows us to achieve such heights. Remember, the blueprint for success cannot be successful if we don't have the personnel to fully implement it. I think the development community would agree. I hope you agree as well. This is from anonymous. After working for the city for more than a decade and a half, I have for the first time ever had to question just what kind of an organization I am working for. The city council has acted as if they were completely oblivious to the plight of its employees and the city manager has acted as if he's hell bent on destroying this organization. His repeated actions to ignore cost cutting recommendations by staff. In order to avoid layoffs goes against everything that we stand for. And Dan, we recommend a hell of a lot more than just turning down the thermostats and replacing light bulbs. The city manager has defiled his position by imposing layoffs as a form of retribution against employees for not breaking their contracts to accept a permanent cut in pay. When combined with the tone deaf and white privileged response and cover up of the police department's militarized attacks on peaceful Walnut Creek protesters. These actions have caused me to lose my trust in the city manager and my faith in the city council. The proposed budget before you is yet another example of the institutionalized white supremacy culture that. Exists within city hall in the city where only white men have ever served as city manager, city attorney or police chief and where only white men and women have ever served as department managers. A budget proposal that focuses layoffs primarily on lower rung positions. Where we actually have employees who are people of color is an overt overtly racist and classist act. It is very clear to me that Dan Bachai is not interested in listening to the city's employees and has absolutely failed in his leadership. I hope you don't follow that same path. This is from Dan Hyatt. Dear Mayor Haskew and council members of Walnut Creek. The artistic director of a theater is a job that takes time to learn. Over the years, Michael Butler has developed a unique understanding of the Walnut Creek audience, which is key to programming the season. His long relationship with the best of Bay Area theater professionals continues to assure the high production values Center Rep is known for. It seems to me that when the social distance era is at an end, there will likely be challenges to the reopening of long shuttered theaters. Michael Butler's leadership and expertise more than ever will be vital to steer Center Rep through that process. Furlough him if you must, but keep the position of artistic director at Center Rep intact and keep Michael in that position. This is from Brian Hirahara. Dear Walnut Creek City Council. In less than twenty four hours, a last minute effort to generate support for the police department funding has created an incredible outpouring of support, three hundred and sixty people. From a mix of residents, business owners, employees, property owners, merchants, etc. For the following statement. We appreciate the city of Walnut Creek and the police department's recent success protecting our community and downtown. You are facing difficult budget decisions, but please provide adequate funding to enable the police department to continue to protect our community effectively. The volume of this quick response demonstrates the overwhelming community support for the police department and the excellent job. It does keeping our city safe as well as the desire to keep it that way with appropriate funding. This is from Cindy Goldfield. Good evening, Mayor Haskew and council members. I respectfully ask you to reconsider eliminating the position of artistic director of Center Rep, a position currently held by Michael Butler. Michael has helmed Center Rep with heart, passion and skill and is beloved by. Artists and audiences alike. Eliminating this position completely rather than furloughing Mr. Butler for the shutdown period leaves this company without a leader, a ship without a captain. Please consider furloughing him instead of eliminating the position. Bay Area Theater, the city of Walnut Creek and Center Rep will not be the same without him. In addition, a theater company without a leader cannot survive. In the current climate, we need to fiercely champion and support the culture and art that makes us what we are. Thank you. This is from Victoria Livingston Hall. Dear Mayor Haskew and council members of Walnut Creek. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my concerns in regard to Michael Butler. And his position within Center Rep. I've worked with Michael Butler for the last twelve years as a costume designer for many shows at Center Rep. I've been so fortunate to have been able to work with such a wonderful, talented and kind person. Michael lights up a room. He has a boundless energy that is contagious. He makes people smile and instantly puts one at ease. That ease and approachability allows for open and honest collaboration. We trust his designers and that trust gives us the freedom to express ourselves and bring our best work to the table. He knows his audience and wants to bring exciting quality work that challenges us and entertains us and because of that. Drive for quality entertainment continued increased revenue to the city of Walnut Creek. Is very known that Michael is exceptionally skilled as an artistic director and has taken Center Rep to levels unachievable without his skills and personality. With these new levels, Walnut Creek has realized a steady revenue increase. I believe the city should be concerned with removing the core reason. Center Rep has been success. Has been successful at generating tax income for the city. Michael has an unmatched ability to understand the pulse of the taxpaying audience and deliver an experience that has generated. Income for the city for many years. It is a great concern. That if the city removes this creative force behind additional revenue within the city, the results will be an equal loss of revenue for the city. That will be challenged to capture in the future. His dedication to his art knows no bounds. He inspires the people in the city and community and when we. Finally get to return back to normal from the crisis, we will need strong, passionate community builders like Michael more than ever. Audience members come to Center Rep and the Leshur Center because of Michael Butler. I've witnessed countless times, audience members who can't help but start smiling and laughing when he does his pre pre show speech. And. This next one is from Dan McGovern. Mayor Haskew and members of the Walnut Creek City Council. I am Dan McGovern, a resident of Walnut Creek for the last twenty nine years. I can empathize with you as you make the extraordinarily difficult budget cuts made necessary. By the COVID nineteen crisis because I served as a high appointee in the three. Presidential administrations and was responsible for managing large budgets and workforces. I can speak to theater because I am a visiting. Scholar in the theater department at the University of California, Berkeley, the president of the Board of the Eugene O'Neill Foundation. Tao House in Danville and the co-founder of the Eugene O'Neill International Festival of Theater in New Ross, Ireland. Michael Butler is the indispensable man for Center Rep programming. Great theater for a suburban audience is a tricky business. What works in San Francisco or Berkeley will not work in the Tri Valley. On the other hand, audiences in Walnut Creek and the Tri Valley deserve theater of the very highest standards. In his long service as the artistic director of Center Rep. Michael Butler's programming has consistently hit the sweet spot producing great plays that appeal to his audience. On the day this crisis to one day this crisis to will pass. By furloughing Michael rather than eliminating his position, you will put Center Rep in a position to quickly and seamlessly resume its mission of bringing great theater to Walnut Creek and the Tri Valley. This is from Dave McConnell. To the Walnut Creek City Council. I would like to go on record in full support of the Walnut Creek or of the W C P D and against any form of budget cuts in the department. I live in Walnut Creek and own a jewelry store in downtown and have had many interactions with W C P D over the years. With no exceptions, I have found them to be incredibly professional, caring, helpful and eager to maintain law and order. Any attempt to reduce funding for the W C P D would result in more lawlessness within our city as we struggle to regain our footing. From the coronavirus and looting slash protesting episodes. If there is more I can do to show this support, please let me know and I will make any effort to do so. Thank you for speaking out. And alerting the community to this need to stand up for Walnut Creek P. This is from J. Michael Flynn. Dear Mayor and councilors, Michael Butler is among the best artistic directors I've worked with and I have been in this business for almost fifty years. He is creative, insightful and one of the most positive and easy to work with people I've ever met. And looking at it from your end of this decision, he is also one of the most efficient and well organized administrators I've ever seen and I have seen a whole lot. This man cares. You would be hard pressed to find someone of his caliber again if you were to let him go. I understand the current budgetary restraints you are facing, but in my humble opinion, there could be nothing more short sighted. Than to lose this man due to a temporary budget crunch. You will not find his like again. It would be hard to imagine Center Rep achieving the same level of artistic and fiscal success under anyone else's stewardship. This is from Charlie Robinson. Mayor Haskew and council members. My name is Charlie Robinson and I've had the blessing and the curse of being a professional actor for about one hundred and fifty years or so. In that time, I've traveled this country and a few others to work in theater. I've seen the inside of many, many theater companies and witnessed time. And again, how it was not the structure or the size of the budget. That most influenced the quality of the work produced. It was the personality and values of those in leadership roles. A Greek philosopher. Rather famously said, character is fate. I believe this very much applies to art. Arts organizations and the people in them. Michael Butler's genuine love and passion for the work, his determination to create a climate in which actors and. Designers and technicians thrive. And feel that their work is meaningful and joyful. And yes, his kindness of spirit, you simply cannot put a price tag on that nor truly measure its invaluable effect. On the quality of the work. I urge you, even as you face the steep challenges of budget cuts, please do not underestimate Michael's contribution nor the impact of his irreplaceable presence. This is from Diane Gilchrist. Dear Mayor Haskew and council members, I am writing on behalf of Center Rep and Michael Butler. It has come to my attention that there are substantial budget cuts being proposed and that Michael Butler's position as artistic director will be eliminated. I strongly urge you to reconsider this proposal. I have known Michael for over fifteen years and have worked with him. Work with him doing fundraising for the D R A A as well as the Lindsay Museum. Michael is more than just a title. He is also a key member of our community. He is incredibly talented with an impressive background in the theater, which enables him to provide us with. Such quality productions. He not only has the respect of the actors and staff, but the community as well. As I said, he very generously gave of his time to speak at a fundraiser for the Lindsay Museum and then had his sister. Who has a successful business come the next year and speak as well. Unfortunately, many people considered theater to be a frivolous luxury and not a priority budget item. This is just not the case. It is an important source of income for the city. People choose to live here because of the accessibility of the arts. It brings people from the outside. Of the city to come and eat, shop and go to the theater. It provides access to the arts to thousands of schoolchildren every year who would not have had that exposure. It helps them to be the best versions of themselves. Without a quality of arts program, you get none of those things. Without Michael Butler, we will not have the quality productions that we have enjoyed in the past. Please rethink your decision to eliminate Michael's position. Artistic directors who have Michael's talent, dedication and experience are not easy to find. We have the best right now and it would be irresponsible and a disservice to the people of Walnut Creek and surrounding communities to let him go. This is from Kathy Hemmenway. Dear Mayor Haskew and Walnut Creek City Council members, on behalf of Walnut Creek Downtown's Business Association. I would like to share our support of the Walnut Creek Police Department for their role in serving and protecting the downtown community. And we ask that you do not reduce police funding in the downtown. W C D appreciates Walnut Creek P D's ongoing support of the downtown business community. Their. Their composed efforts to help. Provide a safe environment for our businesses, their staff, property and livelihood. Walnut Creek residents and visitors have expressed. Feeling a greater sense of order during this volatile and turbulent time of civil unrest. Maintaining a safe downtown environment is paramount to our community. Overall Walnut Creek P D's increased presence and positive engagement at Broadway Plaza and in the traditional downtown have helped to reduce crimes which in turn. Positively impact the economic vitality of the city. The events of the last three months have been particularly difficult for everyone, including our city's business community. We also recognize that it has been a challenging time for our city's police force. Whose job it is to show up day and night to ensure that our businesses are protected during both peaceful and contentious times. Members of law enforcement protect our community. They put their own lives at risk every day to keep us safe. We expect that the department will continue to strive for excellence. While admitting that we can all do better and implementing change where needed. We appreciate everyone's collective effort toward. Creating a successful and peaceful community which includes maintaining police presence within the downtown. This is from Jennifer Swanson. City Council, I have lived near downtown since two thousand and six and love Walnut Creek. I swim at Heather Farms. I exercise at Civic Park. I see the. Workers taking care of downtown and I've gotten a building permit from the city. I know how lucky I am to live in Walnut Creek and I've always had great experiences with city employees. However, I was deeply disturbed to see how the police responded to the Black Lives Matter protesters and I'm now shocked. To see how much money the city spends on its police department and that. It's going to lay off the people who I see taking care of this city. Walnut Creek isn't safe because it spends so much on the police. I just read that Oakland spends forty four percent of its budget on the police, which is about the same as what Walnut Creek spends. Yet Walnut Creek is clearly safer. I didn't move here because of the police. I moved here because of the clean streets, beautiful parks and public amenities. I don't want to see my money being spent on tanks and tear gas. I want to see my money spent on the parks, the maintenance workers, the city planners and the building inspectors. Please don't approve this budget. This comment is from anonymous. To the city council, how dare you put free parking ahead of laying off city employees? How dare you spend twenty minutes of a city council meeting fretting about a sixty five dollar reduction to your monthly stipend but not even mention the twenty two layoffs shown on the same slide? How dare you increase the budget of the police department while making no actual layoffs unlike every other department? How dare you call the extra hours at the county library in essential service while taking? The money away from truly essential services such as building inspections, senior services, park maintenance or childhood arts education. How dare you take such a callous attitude toward employee layoffs demonstrating your position of wealth and privilege? How dare you put your employees last? How dare you? That's the last of the written comments that I have.
Have a few more. Adrian Lee Bird. Good evening, Mayor Haskew and members of the city council. My name is Adrian Lee. I have been a resident in Walnut Creek for the past twelve years. My family and I live in the Northgate neighborhood. My boys attend Walnut Acres Elementary. We participate in swim team, Little League Walnut Creek Surf Soccer Club. W C Y A A basketball and the city's summer camps. Civic arts education classes and as a family. We regularly attend the Leshur Center for the Arts for family friendly programming and the Bedford Gallery for its fun openings and educational. Education events. We love the city's public art program, our parks and open space dearly. We visit our neighborhood parks and bike or hike on the trail daily. I believe our family is very representative of a number of your constituents. We are incredibly lucky to have all of these wonderful services. These are the exact reasons that we chose to move to Walnut Creek from San Francisco to start a family. We have a well educated, deeply engaged community and responsible citizens who take great pride in it. While we have the makings for a great community. It is these services that make Walnut Creek so unique. These programs draw businesses for a vibrant downtown and outside visitors who want to enjoy their spare time here and spend their money here. Having worked in municipal government for the past thirteen years, previously with the city of Walnut Creek and now for the city of Menlo Park. Where we just passed our own balanced budget la. Last with a projected twelve point one million dollar deficit. I understand the process and pain of putting a budget forward and all the politics that go along with it. With this inside knowledge and as a resident who's deeply invested in the community, I urge you to consider two things. One, are the cuts well balanced throughout the city? If there are layoffs, are we seeing a proportionate amount of cuts in city overhead and support services? For non front facing departments, has there been due diligence in looking for savings and efficiencies so your citizens aren't bearing the brunt of the cuts and services they truly care about? Two, please ensure that we still have the infrastructure in place so we're able to restore our wonderful community as soon as we're able to. These are the services we are all looking forward to. Once we emerge from the crisis and what makes Walnut Creek so special. This is from Deb Messina Kleinman. I know we did have a Deb M, but I don't know if it's the same one, so I'm going to go ahead and read it. Dear council members, I'm very concerned about the elimination of so many positions within the arts and recreation. Our community needs and wants more options to support our physical, mental and social health and wellness. Please consider. What you are doing to all of the impacted employees. Finding a new job in the time of COVID is unbearable is an unbearable endeavor. It looks as if many of the targeted positions are lower salary roles. Why not re retrain and use? To create new online services such as online crafts, book clubs, fitness and other health promotion programs? What is the plan for their continued healthcare coverage? Eliminate ten percent of our police force immediately and use those funds to keep the essential arts and revenue rec services and programs. Also, I'm fully in support of working with the county to create a create the twenty four seven mental health crisis unit that you discussed earlier. Thank you. Autumn Kleinman, my name is Autumn and I'm a longtime Walnut Creek resident. It is not hard to do the right thing, especially when hundreds upon hundreds of your constituents are making. The same request over and over. Defund the police in the context of George Floyd, Breonna Breonna Taylor and countless other black Americans deaths. And with the history of the Walnut Creek P D's murder of Miles Hall, reallocating power and resources from the police department should be a priority. Not taking money away from our arts and recreation programs. Walnut Creek is not immune to systematic racism. We perpetuate it. It is not exempt from the national crisis. Of police brutality that has come into focus these past few weeks. We directly contribute to it. We as a city are responsible for creating a more ethical society and a. And a safe space for people of color. You've heard the same comments over and over. Do not let this desensitize you to the. To the importance of these requests. Defund the police, defund the police, defund the police. Emily Katz Moffett. Hi there, I have logistical questions. One, can someone point me in the direction of the process for having city council members and city employees respond to the public comments? I know you don't have to respond, but you can. And what determines whether you do? Secondly, also, what is the process for council members taking these public comments into consideration before voting? And when and when will that vote take place? That concludes the written. Public comments received.
Su Suzy, I have a question. You'd read a a letter from Brian Hirahara and it made mention of three hundred and sixty people. Was there? Were there signatures or were there letters attached to that?
There's an attachment that lists all the names.
Thank you.
We have two, I think, still to go on the Zoom.
Well, Vivian, we'll bring in Vivian.
Hi, y'all. Can you hear me?
Yes. Vivian, go.
Hey, long night. Oh, my gosh. Um, so, hey, you know, here's the thing. I think there is a disconnect between some of the members, the minority, it sounds like, in your community, um, and probably the majority of the folks on city council, between what defund the police sounds like and what it actually means. And I would encourage everyone to take an opportunity to really get educated on what that means. It certainly does not mean that there are no police and that people don't appreciate the police, the good ones, or that we should all just run amok. It means that we take money from that bloated budget. And I think it's well documented that it's pretty bloated because thirty-three, thirty-four percent of the total budget is not needed, especially when you're talking about hurting the arts community and rolling out very expensive canine dogs, uh, tear gas, militarized tanks, and rubber bullets on teenagers in flip-flops holding up signs. And I think everybody else discussed and described a litany of some of your officers who are questionable hires for so many reasons I won't get into again. But the point is that you can take some of the money that is completely squandered in those areas that are statistically proven to not reduce crime or make jewelers any more safe and put that money towards other areas like homelessness, like mental illness, like a twenty-four-seven police response, whether that is taking some of the money from the county and supplementing it with money from the city, whether it's giving those wonderful, wonderful employees and not laying them off. We at FOSAF and Justice for Miles Hall invite all of those people who are being laid off by the city and all of those people who wrote in on behalf of Michael Butler to join us and consider what defunding the police means. It means taking some money away from the police and investing it in the community.
You're out of time.
Thank you and good night, or good morning.
Not yet.
Mark Farrell.
Hello, thanks for, uh, unmuting me. I actually sent in a written comment, which was not read, so I'm concerned that there are more written comments that you have not read out loud. But here is my comment. Mayor Haskew and council members of Walnut Creek, I'm a Bay Area resident, public art commissioner, and president of a nonprofit arts organization who has been involved with the Leshur Center for almost twenty years. The quality of work produced at Center Repertory Theater steadily increased until two thousand and six, at which point Michael Butler began as artistic director. During the fifteen years of Mr. Butler's tenure, the quality of work at Center Rep has increased exponentially. This is a direct result of his efforts in selecting each season, his amazing rapport with patrons, and his respect for all employees of Center Rep from actor to stagehand to usher. As artistic director, he engenders a sense of pride in both the artists and the attendees. His dedicated work in growing Center Rep should not be casually overlooked. And I would like the council members here tonight to ask themselves this. Do you really think the work I've described could have been completed by an independent contractor, most likely not familiar with the community, and definitely without the talent, experience, and vision of Mr. Butler? If the answer is no, then council should vote against eliminating his absolutely critical position and keeping Michael Butler on as artistic director. So that when this health crisis ends, he can return to doing the work that has made Center Rep a source of pride for Walnut Creek. And by the way, I am a public art commissioner, as I mentioned, and you better make sure that you're reading all of those public comments that have been submitted according to Brown's rules. Thank you. Good night.
Mayor, that appears to be all the comments.
Thank you. Bringing it back to council, and do we have any more questions or comments? Any items of concern?
That's a pretty broad question. Do you want to know if we have questions before we make comments?
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's, let's get the questions out of the way. Would that be one from you?
Oh, I can think of a few.
All right, well then.
Um, this is, this is for Mr., Ms., Dan Buckshai. We rece, we received a number of comments from the public as well from, it appears to be employees who have suggested that we, as a council, should consider furloughs, reductions in COLAs, et cetera. I believe at the start of the meeting, you clarified that that requires two parties talking about it. The city with the bargaining units, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So, um, the ball is not in the council's court because we have nothing to accept until somebody, there is an agreed-upon negotiation. Is that correct?
That is correct. My understanding is those discussions began late last week and were continuing through today and will likely continue beyond that. Those were initial meetings, so there are several issues to discuss that are underway right now.
Earlier in the evening, we also talked about working collaboratively with other cities in the area and in the county, which, of which there are eighteen others, as well as with the county, to put pressure on the county to actually make its program work better for all of our communities. They offer a seven-day-a-week program, but they don't offer those services between really the hours of ten PM and early morning hours. So there is a bit of a gap there, or maybe there's something else. What are the steps that you are taking? And the mayor, because it wasn't me that did it. I will correct one of the previous speakers. The mayor has been on the phone and writing letters about that. What are the steps that we are taking in that regard? And how much time do you think this will take?
Yes, let me back up a little bit. Both the police chief and I had had ongoing discussions with the health director and behavioral health director at the county towards the end of twenty nineteen and into early twenty twenty. And coincidentally, so the discussions were about further exploring the mobile crisis response team, how it could be better utilized, how it could possibly be expanded, how the city and other cities could potentially partner with the county again to better utilize that program. We were actually scheduled, after having a few discussions, to have both the health director and behavioral health director come meet with all nineteen city managers in the county to discuss this further. That meeting was scheduled for March twelfth, and we ended up having to table that discussion to talk about shelter and place orders as a result of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. So those discussions have been tabled for a couple of months because everybody has been so focused on the pandemic. We did pick those discussions up about a couple of weeks ago. I've been in touch with the county administrator on a couple of occasions, the city managers. We've, of the nineteen, formed six of us that will be working to take the lead and working at a staff level with the county. And then yesterday, today is only Tuesday, but I guess it's sneaking up on Wednesday here soon. But just yesterday, the mayor did send a letter to the county board of supervisors requesting that they meet with us, work with the cities again to further explore options for non-law enforcement responses to various types of situations. I believe the mayor also contacted at least two of the board members, if not more. And it is in the midst of hopefully being scheduled for the mayor's conference this, uh, meeting next week. At the request of Walnut Creek, we'll be seeking the support of all nineteen mayors in the county to further this effort as well.
And you're looking at the program that they offer. Do you have any sense of what kind of budget gap they're missing in order to augment the service? Or is it still too early to tell because we can't even get them to, haven't been able to get to the table to have a conversation?
Yeah, I think it's too early to throw numbers out. It depends on what level of service would be needed, what the anticipated call volume would be, what the response time would be, the expectations about what types of calls they would respond to, either independently or with the police department, uh, or those that they simply would not respond to because they were deemed to be unsafe for someone other than law enforcement. So that data would have to be analyzed. Certainly, the county has some of that data for what it's been operating over the last two years. But further, you know, analysis would need to be done to extrapolate how that may play out for the various cities, recognizing there could be considerable variability amongst different cities.
In terms of their requirements, funding capability, I mean, no way.
All, all, yes.
Okay, thank you. And, um, do you, well, I will leave it there. Those are the couple of questions that I had that, you know, to start with. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Matt, do you have questions?
I wanted to follow up on council member Sova's questions about the mobile crisis response team. And to Mr. Buckshai, what do you think is a realistic timeframe for you to have those conversations and get a sense for what the funding gap is to make this existing program twenty-four-seven? And whether or not we have city partners, other cities that are willing to partner with us to close that gap?
Soon as the county is willing to meet with us.
In the next thirty days or?
We'd be ready to meet next week if they're ready. So it's really in their court. We've made the request, and we have several cities that are ready to meet now. So we are anxiously awaiting their response.
Excellent. And in the meantime, while we're awaiting their response, what can we, as a city, do to promote this existing program? To make sure that all of our residents know about this existing county program?
Yeah, and I believe we started some of that. I'm going to defer to our police chief, Tom Chaplin, to speak to that in a bit more detail. He's been working with the county and also working with the National Association of Mental Illness, the Contra Costa Chapter, to help distribute that type information about this program and others that are available through nonprofits as well. So Chief Chaplin is here on the call, let him add in more detail.
You're on mute, Tom. I've learned not to do this too quickly.
Uh, good evening again, Tom Chaplin, police chief. I apologize for that, uh, brief delay. Uh, over the past several months, I've been engaged in discussions with some of our regional partner chiefs, uh, to include Chief Sapal at the Martinez Police Department and Chief Hill at the Pleasant Hill Police Department to discuss collaboration on a regional approach to crisis intervention training and having officers that our departments can benefit from that are trained up above and beyond current requirements to assist when there are calls involving mental health crisis in which the police are, are needed. So part of that, that discussion, um, which has, you know, entered into, I'd say, a phase prior to implementation, is to have officers available in the different cities that would then respond to Pleasant Hill, Martinez, or Walnut Creek, depending on where the need was, to provide assistance, support, uh, training, and to really provide additional services. Some of the other things that we have been involved in is meeting with the mobile crisis response team so that our officers are trained up and aware of that resource and that we have the ability to refer families to the mobile crisis response team or have our officers contact the mobile crisis response team directly. And we have started to share information about that program. Lastly, we've also worked with the executive director of NAMI to, uh, utilize a trifold that she has asked us to provide to families in need to help connect them to the resources that NAMI provides so that they are able to take advantage of those services. So our efforts have been to, again, create more response options with highly-trained personnel and also to provide information about the resources that are available so that the families are aware of those resources and can reach out directly.
Thank you, chief, and thank you for joining back in. Just following up on a couple of other things that were raised. And I know that some of this is overlapping with the meeting we had a few weeks ago. But just wanted to confirm, if you can confirm, that, that your department has a use-of-force policy that it complies with state law and essentially meets the principles of eight-can't-wait, including de-escalation techniques and so on?
Yes, yes, we did share our response to eight-can't-wait. It's available via our web presence and also at the agenda packet from the June sixteenth council meeting. There are some areas that are, you know, have language that I don't think is inconsistent, uh, but is not precisely the same as language in eight-can't-wait. We continue to have those conversations. We're looking at one in particular, which involves shooting at a vehicle. And that there's some suggestion to eliminate that altogether. But we have to consider all options and all alternatives to include if somebody is preparing to drive a vehicle into a crowd of people in an act of domestic terrorism, or if somebody is firing a weapon from a vehicle. So there's a lot of nuance to, to these questions and a lot to consider. I will say that our use-of-force policy, uh, which is also available online, is consistent with state law, uh, case law, and best practices. It is, however, our policy, and we are able to make adjustments when necessary. One recent example of that was my prohibiting the use of the carotid control hold based on some of the things that we had heard and that we had learned. So we are open to those, that dialogue and are certainly open to making changes when appropriate.
And there's some, some of that dialogue is occurring in the chief's advisory board that you form, and it consists of various different community members who are advising you on things like use-of-force and other policies?
Yes, that, that is correct. The advisory board, and let me just be very clear about this, because even on this, at the sixteenth meeting, I heard from one of my advisory board members that there might have been some confusion about what the advisory board's role is. And it is just that. It is a group that provides me with candid feedback and dialogue on a variety of topics. We've had our fourth meeting now, uh, as recently as a week ago. And we're, we're discussing things like the administrative leave policy, use-of-force, eight-can't-wait. We have a lot of topics to discuss, but that is one opportunity for me to hear directly from a group of people that are providing diverse viewpoints and things for me to consider. And we'll also reveal something that we think is evident. And we'll also reveal something that we think is evident or obvious in a policy, but that does cause confusion for somebody not familiar with policies, reading that, to understand exactly what it means. So we are, in fact, having these discussions, but those will be ongoing. And again, it's advisory to me. It's not an oversight group, and the information, however, is extremely beneficial.
Okay, Matt, I don't want to interrupt you, but I will, which is, we have a job of doing the budget tonight, and this is a little off-target in terms of our goal. We still have two more items on the agenda. So if your rest of your questions are appropriately budget-related, then go ahead. If not, then we'll have to find another way to have this discussion.
Well, I had one more, and it is budget-related, because it has to do with the mental health training. And I had, in the past few weeks, I've had the opportunity to exchange emails with Captain Hill about the training routine that the officers go through and was pleased to learn that all of our officers, I believe, go through annual crisis intervention training. And then they also, on a biennial basis, go through elimination of bias training. So this budget includes funding for mental health training. What do you envision using those funds for that would supplement the training that officers already get?
It's a great question, and I've got fantastic people on my team that are willing to dive in that and can provide a far more comprehensive answer to that question than I can right now. But the, the job would generally be to bring in professionals to help us get better, to provide education. We have a training day for all of our officers on a monthly basis. That training has included learning from our mental health evaluation team officer, but continuing to try to find really contemporaneous and contemporary training, you know, for us, based on a lot of what we're hearing and what we're learning and seeing in the field. So I can provide additional information down the line as to what that training looks like and what the desired outcomes are.
Thank you, Chief. I'm sorry, I had one more budget-related question, and we received a lot of emails about this, and I think we've heard from a few members of the public too about school, switching gears completely, school crossing guards. And I'm not sure who on staff might be able to address that, but I'd like if we could respond to those concerns.
That would be our Public Works Director, Heather Ballinger. Heather, you can speak to that.
Hey, Matt, she's coming on. Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening, I'm back. Did you have a particular question, or do you want me to just go over a little bit of background on how the crossing guards work or?
I think the background would be helpful, because it seemed like most members that had written in were from the Mount Diablo Unified School District. And my impression from reading the emails was that the school district, it was a 50/50 split, I think, between the city and some parent groups. I just wanted to understand that a little bit better.
Right. So this is the, crossing guards is one of the categories that is in, for reduction, and it was from the, all of our nonprofits, and we're proposing to reduce all of those categories by 14%. So with the crossing guards, it'll be approximately $18,000 of a reduction. And we sent letters to all the parent faculty members and the principals and the superintendents of the schools, letting them know about that. And so, of course, they're concerned, but just to take a step back, you're exactly right. The city, it's a partnership, and we partner with the school districts. We have four crossing guards in the Mount Diablo School District and three in the Walnut Creek School District, three locations and four locations in Mount Diablo. And we partner with them. We pay for about half, actually a little bit more than half. And then either the school district or the parent faculty associations pay for the other half. And it's not exactly half, and it's not exactly per location, so I don't think you want to get down into that kind of detail, but it is a partnership. I will say that Walnut Acres and Foothill Intermediate, they have been talking to us before the COVID crises, and they were indicating to us that they didn't want to pay for any of the crossing guards. And so we were trying to work with them on what could we do differently instead of just all crossing guard locations. But, so this exasperates the situation when we're doing a further reduction. I can't see any of you. Could you, was that answer your question or?
Yeah, it was hard to piece together from the emails, but they seemed to be saying that the funding had run out on their end. And based on our budget cuts, we were saying, we're not going to fund it either. There was no 50/50 or even shared resources anymore on that.
Yeah, and that's the struggle that they're having is that as the parent faculty, community groups, they're struggling to fund lots of different things that the school district requires them to fund. And so they're basically saying, we don't have any money to fund our share of the crossing guards, and now you're even further cutting that.
I understand that very acutely. My wife is president of the PTA at Los Lomas, and she's always telling me that. Thank you. It's unfortunate, but I think it does need that kind of partnership in order for this to work, and hopefully there'll be some resolution down the line.
Councilmember Adele?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, I have two high-level questions, and depending on your answers, I may dig into them a little bit more. And this is just in the response, not only what Mr. Francois said, but some of the questions that were, that came out of public communication. The first one is related to the question that Mr. Francois had about training. All the additions into the budget for next year as relates to training is augmentation of the, whatever training is performed on a yearly basis for our police officers. Is that correct?
Yes.
So the fact that it's $400,000 or $500,000 is just adding on to what has already, has been traditionally funded throughout the budgetary cycle?
That's correct.
As it relates to cahoots and the defunding of the police, reading up on it, and if I understand the thought process and the ideas behind the defunding the police process, the additional, or the services that are being requested to replace or to take over specific things that are being performed by the police department is not an augmentation, meaning adding to the services. It's taking items out of the police department and putting it into, you know, getting rid of them completely or moving them into other departments. Reading up on cahoots, it seems like 17%, at least as of the last data that they have available, 17% of calls are handled by this third-party partnership that they have formed. Do we have any ability inside of our systems to track what calls could be sent out to a third-party service?
I think we could prospectively get there, and there could be some likelihood of taking a look at some data that we have currently to see what, what might fit the bill there. I would have to, you know, to work with our crime analysts and with our records team to see if there is a way to extrapolate that information. And, but I would need to know also precisely what other, other groups like cahoots are responding to.
Yeah, and what is encompassed in that. I get that. I think the problem from not only a community standpoint, but also from, at least my standpoint as council member, is not knowing what percentage it is, what would come in, what would come out, et cetera, and trying to get to a data-driven thought process on this, I think, would be greatly beneficial, not only to the community, but also as council members, to make informed decisions around this. So would you be willing to look into that and come back to the council and provide some guidance?
Certainly. Yeah, we can absolutely take a look and try to determine what would fall into those categories and what we have available right now and make some determinations that way. That research could entail reaching out to other agencies where that model, the cahoots model exists, or even to Berkeley, and determining exactly what they're responding to. Do some of the calls involve homeless? And so some things really aren't as elegant as being able to enter in a question to our records management system that says, would this call have been eligible for this? Because generally, you would have screeners, maybe dispatchers, asking those questions to find out if that call you're getting that might come out as a disturbance might qualify. So I would just, I would just offer that it's only as good as the data that we can pull out of it now based on the parameters by which we're creating calls. We could certainly look and do our best to get that data.
Okay, he switched off his sound, so I think he is done with his questions. Are there any other council questions? And is there anything that the staff needs in addition that they would like us to review?
Well, I would just, you know, just to revisit a bit from what I mentioned at the beginning, because it's been quite some time, is that, you know, your council gave us clear direction on June 9th, and we incorporated that feedback into this budget proposal that is before your council today. We obviously did incorporate the individual comments from Councilmember Silva and Mayor Protem Wilk from the Finance Committee as a reference. So at this point, unless there is specific direction from the council otherwise by way of a motion, we would intend to formalize this report that we have before you tonight into the actual budget document and bring it to your council for adoption next Tuesday. So if there is anything that any council member would like to revisit or change, we need to do that tonight. Otherwise, we will be bringing forward what is before you currently.
And I have a question from Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Well, are we making comments? Because there's been some questions here, but are, do we have the ability to make just comments based on everything that we've heard, including questions and comments that the public have made?
Yeah. We do. Does there a comment you want to make?
Well, I did have some comments that I wanted to make, but I wanted to make sure that, are other people looking to make that as well, or am I alone in this?
I'm happy to make comments. I'm not sure they will be, what, I mean, you know, where, if there will be any major shift in direction, but we should hear from each other, I think. And, for example, I'm very interested in hearing, I'm sorry, I should closer. I'm interested in hearing from the two members of the Public Safety Committee what their thoughts are on the many comments we've received tonight related to public safety. You're the most, the two of you are the most intimately familiar with, or at least on our behalf, with the police department and its activities, and I'd be interested in hearing on that. So there's numerous things.
All right.
And are you going to respond?
Sure, I will be happy to respond. So I have actually several comments, and I'll touch on those regarding public safety as well and, and just give feedback in some different general and specific areas. First, I do want to thank everyone who has commented and has written in about areas of the city budget that are important, obviously, to everybody. I, speaking for myself, I assure everybody that I read every letter. I listen to every comment. I read every comment. I read every text. I have received hundreds in the last several weeks, and these are on a variety of topics, some of which we'll touch on tonight, and on opposing ends of every topics as well. We hear about some, we don't hear about others, but there have been hundreds of comments, and I have tried to respond to everyone as well. And it's obviously people care about Walnut Creek and how people are treated, as well as the programs and services and the departments and how they're funded and how much funding they should receive. And it's great to see that kind of community involvement. And it certainly is never enjoyable having to reduce services or personnel. It's the worst responsibility in any work, whether it's government or private sector. But with reduced funding due to COVID-19 and the economic downturn, we're required to meet a budget and be fiscally sustainable. And if I could waive a one and save every job and service that we've usually provided, I would. Unfortunately, we need to make a reasoned decision between service and personnel reductions. Too much of one without the other can't work, and we can't keep everything at this time, which pains me, and I'm sure it pains all of us. Just, just months ago, we're discussing how to improve our infrastructure and our parks, our future, and, and those plans and other enhancements to life in Walnut Creek while keeping what we already have going. And now, not even two seasons later, we're under a very different scenario. And for that, we need to be understanding that for the time being, and maybe not for a year or more, we're left making do with what our revenues will be while retaining the number-one area that every survey that's undertaken has shown that Walnut Creek residents appreciate and want most, that Walnut Creek is a safe city, and how we can balance that with the desires of what the residents would also like to be able to enjoy within the city. It's heartening to hear that there are members of our community, in particularly people of color, that do not feel safe in our city, that have at times felt discriminated against or experienced racism within or nearby Walnut Creek, and that should upset everyone. People have written and spoken about defunding the police, and I've received just as many calls, messages, and comments about keeping the police intact, and we've heard that as well, and having a safe city that every single resident is proud of. This is something we have heard loud and clear. I'm horrified, horrified at the killings of black men and women that we've recently seen across the media, George Floyd and Rayshard Brooks, Breonna Taylor and others as well. And I'm 100% behind efforts to end this type of brutality everywhere. At our last city council meeting, I proposed a diversity, inclusivity, and implicit bias committee, of which I'll be a part of, and we're putting the specifics of what that will be together now, and that will be brought forward in the very near term. This is something that has been asked of our city, and I think it's important that we move forward with it. Being able to have more options for unarmed responses when people dial 9/11 and working with mobile health crises units, it's important so that a tragedy of Miles Hall's death isn't repeated. We need to respond in meaningful and actionable ways to these issues being raised locally by area residents, advocates, and protesters engaged in the national debate about systemic racism and the role of policing and other community-based resources serving Walnut Creek residents. We have asked the county to provide more options that we can resource, which would be far and away the most effective way. I've personally spoken by phone to three of our county supervisors over the last week about this. It would require even more budget if the city took the lead by, took this on by itself, and simply reducing funding in other areas of the police department wouldn't get us there while retaining the safety that is expected of Walnut Creek and our expectations of what law enforcement should provide, which include, among other things, our school resource officers, homeless outreach teams, and Broadway Plaza officer positions that have received almost universal acclaim, including one school resource officer who prevented a very possible school shooting from an armed student at Los Lomas last year. So we need to use county resources and come up with a better way to do that, perhaps as part of a Contra Costa, a central Contra Costa group, as the Chief of Police was talking about. As someone with a family history of mental illness, this is a priority for me to ensure that we are successful in this. And I do want to say that the various departments are all important, whether every resident or employee expressed their preference or not. People may not necessarily write about sidewalks or smooth and even streets, but those issues are important to most as well. Some people's most important issues are library hours, others open space, others are our programs, and others preserving existing crossing guard funding. I assure you, they are all important, and everything would be saved if it could be. And certainly for me, library hours are very, very important. And certainly for me, library hours are very, very important. I've made that very clear. I do want to mention a quick word about Dan Buckshai and the Department Directors. They are reasoned and give thorough answers to any questions. They're dedicated and care about their employees and how Walnut Creek is dependent on their employees. And it's obvious every time I speak with them, each and every one of them, to anonymously paint them as racist or white supremacists is not only unfair, it's reprehensible without specific examples under the name anonymous. I've tried to balance the needs of the largest number of people along with the requirements and requests of others. If you've written in or you've spoken, you have been heard. Every vote I've made has taken those words into account. It's important to note that where some may be happy in some of the decisions, others won't be. That's the unfortunate nature of this task. I hope people understand and also realize we're doing the best we can, given the circumstances. Those are my comments.
Okay, would anybody else like to step to the plate?
I'll go. First of all, thank you to everyone who's been here this evening and who also sent letters and notes and who as Mayor Pro Tem and all, I'm sure all of us have received phone calls and personal emails. I received a thank you card from someone, a person that I only get a Christmas card from, but they sent a note saying thank you. And I wanted to pass it on that it was also thank you to all of us for all of the hard work that we're doing. Community members who provide us their input, we do listen. And if it looks like we're looking down, it may be that we're making notes. I, I am consistently making notes and I find that I have to be able to see the paper to get the pen accurately onto the edge of the paper. The, this is not a short-term, one-year problem. That is, that is where our paradigm has to get reoriented. If only it were, if only it were possible that we went through this for a few months and we're going to bounce right back. But it's not, and we see that nationally. And we see that it is resurging now. It's, the county has changed what it's allowing to open as of tomorrow. The state has closed certain things that had already opened in other counties. And I think we're going to be bouncing back and forth for a period of time until there is a permanent medical solution that allows this very devastating disease to not be transmitted so easily across, across our communities. And so it's changing the way, it's not only changing our economy and devastating our tax revenues, which in turn devastates what we have available to provide services. It is devastating the jobs locally. It is devastating how we're able to deliver services because many of them, we can't open our buildings and allow them to enter. We can't open the Leisure Center for the Arts, even if we could figure out how to seat people socially distanced appropriately and how to stage a production or a musical performance at a appropriately socially distanced, distanced way. It's impossible just even to get through that and to get there. The services we deliver in the community do not make money. In fact, it's against the law for us to make more than it costs us to deliver a service. So revenues tend to be under what it costs us to deliver the service. And we do that as part of being a community. We make those contributions. And some services deliver or have better cost recovery than others. I really want to thank our employees and our staff who have been working so hard on how to realign the ship and allow us to survive through what could be 18 months to two years. And I really think it might be by the time it all shakes out. Right now, we're get, we're experiencing sales tax revenues and the impact of those losses. A year from now, if this continues and if there are continued job losses across all sectors of the economy, there will be property tax sales reductions because people will not pay their property tax bills. And we're going to see a second wave of tax impacts to us. And that's the way sales tax and property tax revenues do not move in sync. So we have to be long-term in our thinking of this, which is cautious, and be surprised if it's different than that. I appreciate for all of the comments about alternative ways other than layoffs or terminations. I appreciate all of those ideas and I really encourage people to work together and with cities, city management on how to come to other alternatives and come forward with other solutions. In the meantime, we have to adopt a balanced budget that will reflect some changes. And so we have to keep moving forward. The in terms of, I'm really appreciative of the fact that the library, the county library, which gave us an all or nothing alternative, is reaffirming that they are willing to talk to us later in the year, in the fall, about what they can do and what it would cost for us to have additional hours at the libraries. But we will have 35 hours and that is, that's five days a week. And so we, and particularly right now, as the libraries are providing most of their services either online or door delivery, door pickup. I, I'm glad that that service is able to be available to people. The, so I'm looking forward to, in the fall, being able to come back and look at a proposal from the county and see how we're going to make that work in partnership with the library groups. And I'm also very willing to do whatever it's going to take to get the county to the table so that they start talking about how they can make their service work across the county in a better way. What can we do across our multiple city communities to attempt to try to find a better solution for all of our residents across our communities? I appreciate the questions that were asked of the chief about looking at models such as cahoots. It is a very different model in a different state and in a community that is very different from Walnut Creek. It essentially is a county model because the Eugene, Eugene, Oregon and Springfield, Oregon have about two, a quarter of a million people or more. And there's not much else in Lane County, Oregon. So really, that cahoots model is serving a broader area than just one city. And it is a broader organization, the Whitebird Clinic. It provides a range of other services. And so it's, it's funding's structure is going to be very different. But it'd be interesting to find out what kind of calls that those services are taking and being able to offload those things onto a more appropriate service provider, whether it's homeless calls or concerns about nonviolent mental health questions. And finally, I will say that the arts and the economy are very important to Walnut Creek. And I appreciate all of the work that Director Kevin Safin has been doing with the Leisure Center staff and management in order to figure out how to save the Leisure Center, which is at the core of the arts economy in Walnut Creek, and how we can go forward once we are able to reopen that. And I'm, thank you again to staff and the community for all of your input, both pro and con in many cases. And the final comment I will make is more technical in nature. It would be very helpful for the report that we receive next week if we are looking, that we're, if we're able to compare apples to apples. And I'm thinking that the only comparison we really have was what would have been the 2020, 21 budget versus the new 2021 budget. Because as I looked at the various tables again tonight, as people were commenting, you know, you realize that the 2019 budget had a different paradigm on it. It's like looking something, at something in a different currency. And it's not really a different currency. But if we changed our accounting methods for where dollars are moving through the organization, it literally is like it's got a currency conversion. We're trying to figure it out. So if there is a way to resurrect what would have been the 2020, 21 budget and just kind of show it as a, okay, given, then it'd be easier for us to understand what happened and where the losses were taken. And at least you're nodding an affirmative and not looking at me aghast. So thank you and thank you all very much again.
Anyone else? Matt?
I'll go, Mayor. I, I want to echo my fellow council members and thank all the members of the public who called in, who sent videos, who sent emails or reached out. I, I too read all of them and considered all of it in, in these deliberations. And I also want to express deep thanks to City Manager Buckshai and Administrative Services Director Kirsten McCassey, who just did a really great report and took, you know, distilled very complicated budget information into a series of charts and information that even a land use lawyer could understand. So I greatly appreciate that and that's a value that you're providing to the, all of the public as well. These are unprecedented, well, not unprecedented, but certainly very challenging times. I don't think that we've had to deal with such a precipitous drop in revenues as we are facing now and not really knowing when it will end and whether there'll be multiple stages of spikes and closures. We certainly hope that's not the case. I always feel confident and grateful that we live in California and that we live in the Bay Area where this issue is being taken very seriously and appropriately. And I think most people are complying with the health orders and we're doing all we can to try to get back to normal as quickly as possible. This budget reflects a lot of very difficult choices and none of them were taken easily or lightly. I appreciate the work of the, of the Finance Committee and doing a lot of the heavy lifting and vetting these issues and bringing them before us. One area where I have reconsidered my position tonight is on the extra library hours. I, we all agree that libraries are a valuable resource and provide an essential service. I, my wife and I helped contribute towards the funding of the construction of the library and give annually to its operations. So there's no question where my loyalties lie. It's just, we were faced with very difficult budget challenges, including the possibility of even more additional layoffs. But I think, I appreciate former Mayor Hicks and the Library Foundation proposing what seems like a very reasonable and thoughtful suggestion to revisit the extra library hours, maybe not the full amount, but at some range of a lesser amount, starting in the second half of the year when the library is more, more likely to be open. We don't know for sure. And I think we've highlighted the fact that we need to bring the county into this conversation in order to round out the conversation and that we have time to do that between now and January. So I, I am in support of that. I'd like to see it be a 50/50 split if we can and to get more comfort in terms of what the city's capital outlay would be on that. It sounds like it'd be about $115,000. So I'm grateful for their ongoing support. We heard a lot tonight from folks about defunding the police. And I appreciate that their, their thoughts are heartfelt and that they believe that we need to take a hard examination at that. I personally feel that police are a core service that we, as the city, provide. And part of that core service includes things like school resource officers and the homeless outreach patrol. Mayor Pro Tem Wilk mentioned Officer Rosenbusch was able to apprehend a student at Los Lomas, where my son's a sophomore, a rising junior, and was able to deescalate that situation and avoid what could have been a disastrous situation. So if she had not been there, I shudder to think what the result would have been. And we're just getting started with the homeless outreach team and patrol. And I think it's already paying dividends. It was something that Donna Colombo, the, the former director of the Trinity Center had suggested. I think it was a really good suggestion. I don't want to take funding away from, from a resource like that. I want to see it flourish and I want to see it go forward. Now, does that mean there's, there's not room for improvement in training? No, there absolutely is. Ms. Ryan in her comments said, "Do more and do better." And I, I take your challenge. I think we need to do more and do better. I think the friends of Scott, Ton and Alexis Hall have given us a roadmap of areas where we can partner and do better on these areas in terms of the, the listening sessions that we are, that will be underway shortly. We've got a facilitator, facilitator coming on board. The additional funding in this budget, which is, is noteworthy because it's one area where we are spending more money and it's about a half million dollars more. We're spending it on training so that each of our city employees is getting diversity and elimination of bias training and so that our officers are getting additional mental health training. I think that's part of the solution. The one area where I feel like we don't have quite a firm grasp on, on how to address it, but I think we've got a firm commitment to address it, is on how do we take that, how do we enhance a non-police response to mental health crises to avoid future tragedies like Miles Hall, like Mayor Pro Tem said? So how do we, how do we make that work? The conversations have started, the mayor has sent a letter. The conversations have happened between the city manager and his counterparts, between the police chief and his counterparts. For my part, for my part, I'm committed to having conversations with my colleagues here, with my colleagues on other councils, with my colleagues at the county level to see what we can do to make that resource work better for not only residents in Walnut Creek, but for residents countywide. And to our employees, I, I, I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, I value what you do every day. And I know everyone on this council does. I am, before I was on the council, I was on the Planning Commission. And I always would try to give praise to the great work that our planning staff did, that our planning manager did, our community development director, because they made our jobs a lot easier. And I feel the same way about the employees that we have now. We're facing very difficult choices. We, we need you to help us too. And, and it's not just a hard choice that this city is facing. And I'm facing it in my law firm. Other companies are facing it. We did a, we made a symbolic cut at the council level, granted. But please also keep in mind that this is essentially a volunteer position. We are paid a stipend of $650 a month. We've had six meetings this month. I, if I was keeping track, I probably logged over 100 hours. And I'm not saying that to say feel sorry for me because I, I ran for this office and I, it's a great honor to serve the people of Walnut Creek. But there needs to be a partnership here and we need, we need you to help meet us partway on some of these things so we can avoid eliminating employee positions, including Michael Butler, who I have never met. But I have seen some of his productions and they were really quite entertaining and, and, and moving in the, in the case of the Diary of Anne Frank. So I'm going to leave it there. I, well, yeah, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Justin, do you want to say anything?
Yes, I do. I don't usually like to repeat what other council members have said, but I'll, I'll do a little bit of that tonight. So if you could just grant me a few minutes. Thank you for all the people that, that joined us again. While these conversations are not always easy, like I said during the last meeting, it's more conversation, more debate, more ideas that I, that I personally believe that are brought to the table to actually have a much better conclusion at the end with, with, with much better goals and objectives. So thank you again for everyone that came down to speak tonight. I also just want to comment on Mr. Wilk's statement about city leadership. I, I do concur with his statements. It is, while I don't always agree with what Mr. Buckshai brings to the table, I think that it should be noted that they are doing their best in very challenging times. For normal budgeting processes, what has occurred in the last couple of months, just in my experience, eight years of experience on this council, would take, you know, a year or two to accomplish. So the effort that has been put in, not only by Mr. Buckshai and the management team, but also everyone else within the finance organization, everyone else that participated in giving the information in for the budget should be should be commended and is definitely appreciated by myself. And I'm sure that appreciation is shared by the rest of my council members. So thank you for doing that, Mr. Buckshai, and thank you especially those individuals in finance that I'm sure have spent many more hours than I've spent in my business over the last couple of months working on this. So thank you. As someone that has, who has unfortunately participated in this, the COVID downturn and laying off some of the 40 million Americans that have been affected by COVID and terminated, I can tell you that this process is not something that anyone enjoys and is not pleasant. I have been on the other side of these types of decisions and I know the pain, the confusion, the anger, the frustration, all that goes along with it. Yet, as Ms. Silva said, this is not a short-term issue. Nor has it really been for many years, all but quickly accelerated by COVID. And I hope that we as a council can use this as an opportunity to set a brighter future with a long-term vision of fiscal sustainability and service stability. Now, I'm not going to comment too directly on the budget tonight because I already expressed last meeting that I'll not be in support of it. However, to address Ms. Silva's specific question, you know, on the Public Safety Subcommittee, there is a whole slew of issues that I think that should be addressed. I won't repeat them there here tonight, but I hope that we, working with the chief, can very quickly start getting through those questions at the Subcommittee level. I'm encouraged by seeing training, improved training, not only for the police department, but really across the board. More training is beneficial to everyone in Walnut Creek, whether it's citizenry or our staff members. And it will ensure that Walnut Creek remains a high-functioning organization and one that individuals want to work for. Yet we must not only focus on us internally, I also address some issues as relates externally. How do we better educate and provide more transparency to our community? How do we perform outreach and engage with them, especially our communities of color? And then how can we better educate our community on what services we actually provide here as a city entity? And what us as individual council members and us as a council entity can actually do? Because still, even tonight, there seems to be some confusion around that. And I fully admit, before I got involved, I was just as confused also. And I think trying to find ways to get that information out there, whether it's on our website, or I know we do a lot of training here in the city, the Citizens Institute and other programs, but trying to get that out in front of the community, I think would go a long way to alleviating some of their concerns and of course educating them on how they can work with us and other government entities to be more successful in their lobbying efforts. And I'm also very encouraged, and lastly I'll say, I'm also very encouraged by what the chief said tonight and what he has been saying through his tenure here at the city, which is his willingness to be transparent, his willingness to collect and report on data, and his willingness to night, and he said it, and I look forward to following through with him on this, but his willingness to report on what and how the city would, or what responses that we have that would comply or fall within the Pahu's model. I completely admit I'm a data nerd and I rely on data to make a majority of my decisions. And I think it's important that we get that information back to turn this conversation from less of a theoretical conversation, one that is just on paper, to one that is, we can actually make decisions based off of data that is provided to us. And I hope that will go a long way of driving this to hopefully a successful conclusion. Lastly, I just want to put in this one note that the FOSF individuals in the Hall family has been down in front of us for well over a year. And while I personally believe, and I have said that, we have made great strides to achieving and working with them to achieve their goals, it's clear that we have not concluded that effort. And I would strongly encourage the city management team to put the funds forward in which we have designated towards this, especially as it relates to the community meetings and outreach, and get this done as soon as possible. I know it's not 100% on us. I get that. But it's very clear that those types of things need to be drawn to conclusion and we need to be able to formulate recommendations and possible changes in order to ensure and again, to provide transparency to the community that we're doing our best in order to service everyone in their community, whatever your color, whatever your race, whatever your sexual orientation. That's it. Thank you. I'll give my thanks.
Pretty much everything has been said. There isn't very much left for me at all other than I too read everything and tried to absorb it and try and keep an open mind as much as I physically can to make sure that I don't miss some good points and some learning experience. I'm going to be a little frank. We got a little, people got a little mean about our city manager. I'm going to get a little frank about getting a little mean. There has never been a more enthusiastic cheerleader about the fantasticness of our Walnut Creek city staff, except I kind of feel personally a little disappointed because we have been struggling with trying to communicate and share with them how dire this circumstance has been. I don't know that you remember that when the COVID closing happened first off, the city manager made sure that everybody was covered early on until at least the first end of what we thought was going to be the shelter in place. And then the city manager did, and his team, did try and figure out how to work it out with FOLOs when we were beginning to run out of money and the really scary numbers started to develop. They tried to figure out how to make it as possible to keep as many people as whole as they could. And people seem to have forgotten all of those efforts. What pushes come to shove? And I believe that the city has made a real effort to communicate with the staff that it can't be perfect. We can't solve everything. We just don't have, the well is dry. We have to be very careful. And I think we approached people and they made, I'm sure, perfectly reasonable choices in their understanding. But I don't think they made enough of a stretch to understand how much people were trying to find the way to make sure that we could keep people hired and on the job. I'm hoping that they have heard very carefully that there is all efforts put forward to keep as much of our staff and find ways to keep as much of our staff connected to us. We've built a great staff. I still am your biggest cheerleader. And I know that you're going to come through for us and you're going to work together to help us solve this problem. I don't think that we even addressed the one thing that I am going to bring up. And that is that the city manager asked us to opine on whether we should put some money aside as we try and negotiate with the county and with our fellow cities to go forward on that. I am going to recommend that we do, and I'm going to recommend that it be $100,000 as our initial effort. If anybody...
I'll echo that.
Okay. Do I have nod, head nods from, I thought head nods. I got three head nods, four head nods because mine's nodding and one no. Is that correct? Or are you a yes to? I thought I saw, Justin, that you were...
I have not a no yet. No. As I said at the last meeting, I would fund the library.
I'm not sure. I'm going to count it as now unanimous that the council has decided to...
I don't think we were talking about libraries. I think it was talking about a...
I missed that. What were you talking about? Let me just ask you. I thought you said library, but maybe I was thinking library.
Okay. We were talking about whether we should earmark some more money to putting together the Coalition of Cities and work with the county. So...
Yes.
Okay. I read it right. It's five. And so, and then finally, I'm going to beg our community to take responsibility for doing everything that they can because their health and their well-being is critical to our bringing our economy back. Their respect for the open space and how very valuable it is and how we will have to struggle if people just go willy-nilly and don't do what they need to do. We're going to have to, we're going to have to find a way to patch it up and better they do it right and stay on the trails and they respect each other. People wear masks. People wash their hands. I am terrified having actually eaten dinner out at a restaurant in Walnut Creek and watched people completely ignore social distancing and behaved like it was last year at this time and everything was wonderful. We as a community, and I don't mean just the council and just the city, we as a community have to go forward and embrace our responsibility to heal our, to keep us all safe so that we can do what everybody wants us to do, which is keep Walnut Creek and the quality of our life at a level so high. Everybody has responsibility in this measure. Okay, that was way too many words to say what I feel passionately about. And now I have another job, which is I believe that we are finished with the discussion on this item. In order for us to go forward, we have to have a vote to continue because we are past 11 and we need a vote that we go forward. So... All right, guys. Here he is.
Oh, I just want to make sure. Do we not vote on this, on this whole item? It's just only the comments received by staff and they'll come back and that's when the vote will be?
Yeah. So the purpose tonight was to see if there are any changes that your council wanted to provide relative to the framework that's before you today, which we did receive the direction relative to the $100,000 for the Mobile Crisis Response Team or a similar effort with the county as a seed money, if you will. So we will make that change. We will then formalize everything into the formal budget document with additional data and information as well as the other funds. It won't just be the general fund, parking and boundary. It'll be all funds. So that's when we will be seeking a final vote on everything via resolution would be next Tuesday.
Thank you.
Okay, back to the question.
I would second it. We need to get through it.
I agree. Third it. Yes.
I think we need a roll call vote to make it official.
I'm sorry.
Justin made the motion and I believe Cindy seconded it. And I think I know how Mayor Protem is going to vote, but would you go forward?
Councilmember Adele?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wilk?
Aye.
Aye. There we go. All right. So we're now on to our next consideration item. And that is the Downtown Parking Enterprise Fund. And thank God, it's more better news than what we've had to deal with so far this evening.
Yeah, I'm going to kick things off here. Mayor Dan Buckshai, city manager, once again. And you're right, Terry gets to be the giver of the best news that we've heard in a while. As your council may recall, when we met on June 16th, we had a comprehensive review of the parking budget and we had updated information. And I believe that meeting identified how fluid the COVID situation is because we were anticipating not needing to charge for parking based upon utilization of parking rates, or parking spaces rather, until possibly October. And here it is now that we're already pushing the need to charge for parking due to an over-usage in the core downtown area, if you will. We'll speak to that. One thing that I do want to highlight tonight because it is a bit confusing is there are a couple of scenarios that are presented here in terms of what's being updated for budget assumptions about revenue. And we'll be asking, you know, your council to weigh in on which scenario or approach. But recognize that you're not voting on actually implementing the specific rates and timeframes in which the charging for parking would occur. That is still intended to be based on data. It may vary a bit, but staff is closely monitoring what's occurring in the various areas. The various areas being the downtown core, the purple poles for the outer area and the parking garages. And when utilization does get to or close to the 85% number, which is our targeted goal, we would then trigger the need to charge for parking in those respective areas. So with that, our parking guru Carla Hansen had a long-time commitment and couldn't make this special meeting this evening. So we have Assistant City Manager Terry Kilgore, who is going to lead the presentation tonight.
Thanks, Dan. Yes, you're absolutely right. This is, this fund is indicative of the fluidity of the situation. And for once, it's a bit of good news. As early as June 9th, we were projecting a $3.6 million deficit in this fund. And with the reinstatement of outdoor dining, we have seen activity in the core spike to almost levels that we were seeing before the COVID crisis. So next slide, please. As Dan mentioned, we're going to be asking you this evening to help us identify which revenue solution you'd like us to use in our budget proposal. And then any feedback you may have on the parking fund budget, as well as some proposed changes to the master fee schedule this evening. So next slide, please. This is old news. We had high demand in the core. It dropped as COVID hit us. Next slide, please. And now we are over 85%, sometimes over 90-plus percent in the core. And so we've gone in and revised these revenue assumptions. Next slide. Next, please. So when it comes to revenue assumptions, we've broken this into two scenarios. The first scenario is what if we basically turned on all of the mechanisms that we've charged for in the past? That's the core meters, the garages, as well as the purple pole meters. And we began enforcement all effective July 1. And the second scenario is what if we presume that it's sort of a rolling kickstart for these different areas based on what we think may happen? And obviously this is fluid as the situation continues to emerge. But we've been positively surprised by demand in the core. Next slide. So the assumptions that both scenarios share is that effective, I was going to say tomorrow, but effective today, I guess it is, July 1st, we begin reinforcing and actively managing parking. That means we'll be writing tickets for time zone violations. That means we'll be expecting people to pay for the meters in the core. And then in all the scenarios, we assume a 70% occupancy rate. So that is a little different than normal. We traditionally have targeted 85%, but we're looking at 70% to trigger us to each of the next levels. Throughout these assumptions, we predict or we hold true that 125 spaces remain non-revenue generating. That's the assumption that enables us to support the outdoor dining patios in the downtown as well as... as well as the curbside pickup spaces that we've created as well. The main change in downtown meters is that we've increased the amount of time that people can park at a meter from two hours to three. But there's been no changes to rates, except the one that I'll talk about in Scenario 2 that's proposed. And we continue to have monthly parking passes in play. Next slide, please. So Scenario 1, as I mentioned, we go back to business as it was before COVID. We start enforcing exactly as it was before COVID. And if we play that out with the 70% occupancy, it takes us to a total projected revenue of 7.9 million. Next slide. Scenario 2 differs in that we only charge in the green meter starting July 1 and I'll walk you through the phase-in schedule. And we also do propose a change to the garage rates that would require some additional approvals. The total projected revenue there is 7.5 million. Next slide. So in Scenario 2, it takes us four months to ramp back up to where we're charging for all types of parking. As Dan mentioned, this will be, the changes themselves will be based on demand, but this is how we've built the revenue scenario specifically. The major change here is that we presume that the rate for garages would be increased to $1.25. That would require transportation commission approval. So that if that does not occur, we would be back before the council modifying these rates as well. But what it does on a functional level is it makes parking most expensive in the core, makes the garages second most expensive, and then makes the purple poles, which are our more outlying areas, the least expensive parking, which is a little bit more of a linear approach. Next slide, please. So here's what, so the parking expenditures, next slide, please. You know, I think we've seen these numbers. These numbers stay constant. The big change is we noted in text that we're reducing the contribution to the downtown trolley in Route 5 by 213K. That is driven entirely based on our contract that we reimburse for actual ridership. And so we are seeing lower numbers as people are readjusting their commute patterns as well as still some of our key businesses are not at full staffing. So we expect that to continue. At the end of the day, we end up with 7.1 million in total expenses. And we, at this point, retain the 22.5 FTEs carried in this fund. Previously, we were predicting that we would have to reduce staffing in this fund, but the good news is that regardless of which scenario you pick, the fund is still running a positive balance. Next slide. The capital projects that would be funded in fiscal year 21 are the leisure center garage elevator repairs as well as the portion of the EV charging stations project that is specifically related to downtown. Next slide. The last time we spoke, you had, as a council, had approved up to $800,000 in use of reserves. With the new positive revenue numbers, we are not proposing to use any reserves in fiscal year 21. And in fact, we are proposing to contribute to reserves to the positive of just over $350,000. Next slide, please. Next slide. So here's how this lays out between Scenario 1 and Scenario 2. So if we assumed, we turned everything on and we saw demand come back to a level of 70% on the aggregate with the expenditures we just talked through, we would end the fiscal year 21 with a surplus of over $353,000. Phase, excuse me, Scenario 2, which is the rolled phase-in that assumes we kind of open up based on some delayed demand, still leaves us in the positive even with that $350,000 contribution to reserves. So either scenario leaves us in a positive place. Next slide, please. So I'll pause just for a moment and bring you up to speed on a few proposed changes to the master fee schedule. We are simply looking for feedback on these this evening. If council is amenable to these, as Dan mentioned before, these would be brought back as part of the larger budget package on July 7. Next slide. So we would propose increasing the rates for garage parking passes. Right now, they range between $40 to $50. We're proposing to increase the range from 40 to 100. It better reflects market value. And this action does not set the actual rates. Again, that goes through Transportation Commission. It just broadens the range of consideration for them to set the actual rate within. And then we propose, again, increasing the fee range for special event parking from $3 to $6 for those events before 6:00 PM and from 7:00 to 10:00 for those events after 6:00 PM. The actual rate, again, set by Transportation Commission. Next slide, please. So this evening, we're asking you to provide us guidance on which revenue assumption to use in the build, in the presentation of the 21 parking fund budget. And then any feedback you may have that we should consider in our final package on the parking fund as well as the proposed changes to the master fee schedule. With that, I would open it to questions.
Does any council member have questions? I don't see any. So.
Let me, if I could just.
Yeah.
So just to confirm Dan's introduction, really these phased, the dates in the phasing for Scenario 2 are really purely for the business model itself and in actuality, depending on demand, when the garage, if the meters open tomorrow downtown core area, the garages would open next because they're the next closest in the geographic demand area. And those garages, they could open August 1st if demand hit 70% or September 15th if demand didn't hit it. I mean, really? And that, is that correct? And then eventually, the purple pole meters?
That is absolutely correct. That these are our revenue assumptions. We've made our best guesses based on the activity we're seeing, but the actual reality is likely to vary. The only thing we know for certain right now is that most of our projections have been close but not spot-on. And so we would come back to the council with updates based on what really happens in the field.
And this was identified, defined, created before the county rolled back the rollout. So it's probably going to be slower just because of that in terms of the demand?
It could be. I feel optimistic that we're gonna see the core meter numbers come in pretty close because those were driven off of what we were seeing just with outdoor dining. In my opinion, where we'll see some lag potentially is maybe in the garage numbers and most certainly probably in the purple poles. They'll come up a little slower than we thought, probably.
Right, okay.
Any other questions? All right, I'm going to open this, if your interpretation, to public comment. Is there anybody who's looking like they want to?
I don't see any virtual blue hands and I don't have any written public comment.
All righty. My fear was falsely placed. Do we, do we have any comments, additional help? I think we've been asked to choose which of the two varieties of choices we would take. And I'm going to start because I can. And I'm going to suggest that given we did get the roll back and I, I think we would, I'm more comfortable doing the phase, the slower one, the one where we only have $12,000 extra. I would love, I would love to say I have confidence in the $300,000 revenue expense, but I don't. So I'm voting for version 2.
Madam Mayor, I concur. It looks like we do have one blue hand in terms of a public comment.
Oh, that happened after.
But didn't we close public comment? Okay.
Do we?
I would opt to allow the speaker to speak.
Yeah, it's my meaning as well. So please call the speaker forward, please.
Owen Smith.
Okay, my screen is back again. I just have a question about the process. It's not really a comment. My question is, you heard hundreds of comments tonight, mostly in favor of furloughing Butler instead of terminating his position and also in favor of making some kind of reduction in the police budget commensurate with your reduction in revenues. You know, I don't think anybody is saying we don't like police. So the question is, in considering these issues of voting on this budget, is there, is there anything, is that, are either any of those, is that just gone? All that public comment is just being ignored? Or is there gonna, or is there a time when a motion would be made, you know, one way or the other, to vote on it? Or to consider some of the changes that were recommended? I just, if you could just clarify it, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
The official, Steve, do you have a response?
Madam Mayor, I was just gonna say, one, the comment really relates to your last item. But to the specific question, the council will entertain a motion and take action on the budget at their next meeting. They're not actually taking action tonight. They were simply receiving the budget, giving some direction. So the council will continue the discussion at their next meeting.
Okay, so I was sort of under the impression from Mr. Buckshai that you were just gonna go forward with what you had now and not amend it as of Tuesday. Next Tuesday, you're going to act on it. Am I wrong about that?
So what Mr. Buckshai was referring to was that the staff will come back with a budget that reflects what was presented tonight plus the council's direction. The council will make the ultimate decision at their next meeting.
Okay, well, thank you for clarifying. Appreciate it.
I do have one written comment.
Okay.
Jane White. Why does it make sense to charge downtown meters and not the outlying meters? There are many of these purple poles right outside the downtown area. For example, on Main Street north of Civic Drive and even on the north side of Civic between North Main and Broadway. This seems crazy not to charge. You're going to enforce two-hour parking limits on North Main, down by Subaru and Holiday Inn, but you're not gonna charge on Broadway near DMV. This is confusing and seems crazy given the city's budget crisis.
Mayor, it seems that that last comment was a bit of confusion about what we use the monies for. It's not to backfill the operating budget and also what the proposal is and why. And maybe Terry can go back very quickly.
Sure. So we charge for parking in the downtown to manage demand and to make sure that there is rotation of spaces in the most popular areas. And then we use that money to operate the garages, to fund the staff who do the parking enforcement. We also help fund enhancements in the downtown area with these monies, like the landscaping that our teams do a beautiful job on. We also help fund some downtown events. But the main focus is to make sure that we're managing demand. For the first time in my career, I actually had downtown businesses say to our team, "We want you to start doing parking enforcement. We want you to start charging at the meters." Because part of what it does is it helps relocate people who are coming downtown to work, to park in areas that aren't prime locations for people who are trying to pop in and have lunch or pick something up and kind of make a short-term visit. So it helps get people to the right kind of parking and keep those key spots right next to our retail and restaurant businesses open and available to customers. As far as part-time enforcement in other parts of the city, we've also had requests to go back to enforcing those time limits. We're not charging because there's not enough demand there to make that a viable model. But we have heard from a large number of businesses saying, "Hey, we want you to start enforcing those time limits. We have people coming in and parking there all day and we need those spaces to operate our businesses effectively." So we will bring both.
So these are areas that are not directly in the downtown core area. They're further out north or south of downtown.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Back to, back to the job of what we're suggesting for the staff to put as their formal presentation. Councilmember Silva.
I wasn't sure if Councilmember Francois was done.
Yeah, I agree. And based on the comments that we've received, I'll just reaffirm that I agree with the phased-in approach.
I agree with the phased-in approach because I think it reflects our purpose and our ordinance, which says that we are charging for parking in order to address and manage demand for parking. And so the phased-in approach does that. And my only other comment would be that on the after 6:00 PM fee for event fee, I would like to see the range be $5 to $10 so that there isn't an immediate assumption of a bump in price because currently it's $5. So if the bottom of the range is $5, at least Transportation Commission has the option of keeping it at the current price for some period of time if they so choose. I would also like to mention that there are two other fees that are not yet changed to ranges that are in the fee structure. One is the lost ticket fee. And I believe Carla Hansen would tell us that the Laz parking thinks it's too low because it shouldn't be beneficial to lose your ticket. Or it shouldn't be less expensive if you lose your ticket than to be in a garage for a certain number of hours. And also, I think we have to look at the EV, the price range for the EV charging stations. But they might.
Justin?
I concur with Ms. Silva.
Mayor Protem?
I agree, but let me ask about the EV charging. Which range are we referring to there?
I think it's currently something like $1 to $1.25. And if for some reason the Transportation Commission does move the price on the garage, the range of the fees on the EV charging stations need to move appropriately with it so that you pay for the electricity as well as the space.
Yeah, agree. Agree on all three.
Okay. I believe, unless staff tells me otherwise, that we have faced this item. I've seen a positive. That then leaves us with one more item to go and see. Attorney, do I have to have another motion to continue or are we done? I mean, are we?
You do not need another motion.
Okay, all right, then. Rolling on. Capital budget, next.
All right, I'll be brief with my intro. Dan Buckshai, once again, City Manager. And I would like to introduce our Public Works Director, Heather Ballinger, to give the presentation on the capital budget for fiscal year 2021. to give the presentation on the capital budget for fiscal year 2021.
Thank you, Dan, and good evening, Mayor. Here I am again. Do you, I have a series of about 12 slides, and I know it's getting late. Do you want me just kind of run through these as quickly as I can? And then team it up for any questions? Is that?
That'd be my vote.
Okay. Okay, I'll run through the slides quickly.
Please stretch it out, Heather.
We'd like to see if we can order breakfast from this.
Right, right. Okay. So I did want to take, even though I know we're running late, I did want to thank the team that's been working on the capital budget, led by Carlton Thompson and working with Steve Waymeyer, Rich Payne, Mike Vickers, Jake Allred, Alex Wong, and Jeff Jolavet. And there was others too, but I did really want to take this one minute to thank all of them. It's been a lot of work to put this capital budget together. We've had a lot of stops and starts, and just like everybody has because of COVID. So anyway, it's been a good effort. Tonight, I'm going to go over, give you the opportunity to review the funding allocations that were recommended by the Finance Committee, and then review the proposed projects that are included in the capital budget. So next slide. Here's our agenda for tonight. I'm gonna touch on really, really quickly the development process of putting together the capital budget, and then again, talking about the funding allocations and the projects. And then I want to highlight some of the things that are different in this capital budget. The big one, of course, being that it's a one-year capital budget, and then conclude with recommendations and any questions. Next slide. So this is the Capital Improvement Program. And as you all know, the 10-year Capital Improvement Program informs the capital budget. So this slide illustrates all the various inputs into the CIP and the development of it. It's five two-year cycles. We take a variety of input from all of our stakeholders. We use existing reports, analysis, our management tools. We talk to our Transportation Commission, our PROS Commission, and particularly our user groups. We look at our traffic impact fee project list. And a big tool that we use, of course, is our Maintenance Master Plan and our pavement reports. The capital budget, though, does appropriate the funds for the specific projects, and that's what we're doing here tonight. So next slide. I won't spend a lot of time on this slide. This just talks about the process that I kind of outlined already. We look first to our available funding. Then we spend some time looking at our asset management projects. And that's probably where we spend the bulk of our time. We work a lot with our end users. We work with our Maintenance Master Plan. We do walkthroughs of all of our facilities. And it's a very deliberate and thoughtful process. We go back several iterations, developing what the projects are, what's the highest priorities. And then we work with our commissions. We work with our Transportation Commission, our PROS Commission. We heard from our Finance Committee, and then now we're here at City Council. Next slide. So this is an important slide. I think this is the highlights, or as our director Kevin Sefin likes to say, this is our headlines here. What's unique for our capital budget FY '21? One, it's smaller. It's a reduction of about 20% from our prior years. It's about a $7.6 million capital budget. Usually, we run around $10 million per cycle, per one year. It's conservative. So we looked at the allocations for our forecast for our gas tax and for our Measure J, and we didn't allocate or suggest that we use all of those funds. We held back on that. Because we're in such a crazy time with COVID, we thought it would be better to be conservative. As you know, to address the fiscal crisis that we're in, we just talked about our capital budget. There's a reduction in the general fund that's allocated to this capital budget. So that is deferring some of the projects that we would normally have in this capital budget. And then at one of your prior budget meetings, you discussed the Year Parksure Future. And we've put that project on hold. But even so, this capital budget does not allocate very much of the Park in Loue funds. We're basically holding those funds off to the side when we're ready to be doing some of those projects that were outlined in the Year Parksure Future. Next slide. So here's the summary of the fund allocations. On the left-hand side of the slide is all the summaries of the different funds, the general fund, the gas tax, Measure J, so what's in the capital budget. And then the right-hand side is just a demonstration of how all those play out. And I think what it really demonstrates is that it's a balanced approach. There's not one type of funding that we use over the others. It's really pretty evenly distributed. Another thing that you can note from this slide is that 20% of the capital budget is from the general fund. So all the rest of it is coming from special funds. And next slide. So this slide is showing the spending by category. So, and we have two major categories for spending. One is asset management, and the other is discretionary spending. And asset management is the bulk of our capital budget. It's 64%. And that's our fix-it-first category. And that's what we do to keep our assets in order. It's to keep our facilities and care for our infrastructure. And then the discretionary funding is about 36%, and that is from mainly developer-in-loue fees and/or grants. There's no general fund in the discretionary spending. And I'm gonna go into these categories and what projects are in there in the next coming up slides. So next slide. So asset management. As I mentioned, the capital budget is $7.6 million. That is 30% lower, but of that, $2.6 million of it is for our roads. We've been working on Ignatius Valley Road. We've been systematically trying to develop projects and pave Ignatius Valley Road. We couldn't do it all in one project. It was $25 to $30 million, so we've been taking it apart in pieces. Our next arterial that's coming up that we need to overlay is South Main, kind of by Kaiser. That road is in bad shape. The next, we've been working, we have really dialed in our Maintenance Master Plan for our buildings, our streets, our sidewalks, and our pavement. But we need to work on a Maintenance Master Plan for our bridges and our storm drains. And so we have in this capital budget a bridge maintenance study. And it's something that is required for us to receive federal grant money for bridge repairs. We need to have that tracking tool. So that is something we put into the capital budget. Storm drains is another area of our assets that we've wanted to focus on lately. You know, you probably can think of other agencies that are our neighbors that have had storm drain problems. Storm drains are easy to be out of sight, out of mind because they're underground. And so we want to do an inspection program where we can review and TV our storm drains so we can get a handle on what kind of repairs we need to do and how we can do a long-range planning for it. And then we also put some money in for repairs of our storm drains. Next slide. Just to go back, that, oh, I forgot one thing. Go back one slide if I could. The picture, maybe I can't go back. But, oh, there it is. The picture that's on there is the sound wall along South Broadway. We have been systematically doing repairs on that sound wall. It was constructed when they built South Broadway, and there were some wood sections, and they have been failing. So we're gonna be doing another 75 feet of sound wall, and that picture demonstrates that there. And we're almost done with completing that. Okay, next slide. So building facility maintenance. The, this is typical stuff that we do in every one of our capital budgets. We have $50,000 in for building roofing. We're gonna be putting some sealant on the roof at City Hall. We have money in for $200,000 in for our building exterior and site maintenance. We're gonna be painting some of the outside of City Hall and doing some work on leisure. The biggest category in this section is our mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. We're constantly replacing HVAC units and plumbing and that kind of thing. This year, we're proposing that we put some money into the courtyard. Most of the infrastructure out at the courtyard was put in in the 90s. We have more work to do at the leisure. You might recall that council approved a project to do the chiller at the leisure, but we still need to do other work at the leisure. We have energy efficiency upgrades at City Hall. And then we're doing some other building management systems in city-owned buildings. We try to get about 25 years out of our mechanical equipment. And it takes, our building maintenance staff spends a lot of their time caring for the equipment before it needs to be replaced, and that does help extend the life of it. Next slide. So maintenance to our sidewalks, parking lots, signals, and streetlights. Of course, that's part of the core of what we care for. Trip and fall mitigation, it's something, again, that we put into the capital budget every year. We do plating of our sidewalks outside of the downtown area. It's really important that we have a systematic approach to this. There was an agency in the Bay Area that was recently sued, and they lost due to the fact that they didn't really have a systematic approach. So every year, we do put in funds to whittle away at our trip and fall, if you will. It's a huge liability, and we don't, anyway, we just put so many in to care for it every year. Parking lot maintenance, we pay for that at a general fund. We do patch paving and crack sealing to our various parking lots. The picture that you see here is Civic Park. We're about halfway done with completing the paving of Civic Park parking lot. We can't use gas tax for a parking lot, so we have to make sure we use general fund for that. Signal and street maintenance, streetlight maintenance. We have 100 traffic signals in Walnut Creek, so we're always continuing to put money into those to upgrade them and maintain them. And then the AD transition plan is similar to our trip and fall mitigation. Every year, we allocate money to focus on access improvements, in this case primarily in the downtown. Next slide. So more asset management. Again, this is a big part of our capital budget. Parks, open space, trails, irrigation, and playgrounds. That's one category where our Parks Division mainly looks at doing upgrades of their irrigation or trails, just miscellaneous small projects that need to be done throughout the year. Median upgrades. We have been systematically trying to upgrade our irrigation and replanning our medians, trying to reduce the amount of, one, water, and then, two, the amount that our staff has to be in the medians. That's one of the more unsafe places for them to be. And so when we change out the vegetation and the irrigation, it means our staff don't have to be in the medians as often and spend time in traffic. Court reservicing at Larky Park. This is one of the projects that came out from our Park Recreation Open Space Commission and from feedback we were getting from Kevin Sefin and his group. Actually, a lot of our tennis courts need repair. So we, again, going back to the Year Parksure Future and trying not to spend a lot of Park in Loue money, we picked the worst tennis court, and that's the one at Larky Park. So we're gonna be doing what they call a seal coat to that and try to do some crack sealing and get another five years out of it before it has to be completely rebuilt. The next projects that are on this list, you've heard about them already from the parking fund, the EV charging stations, and the elevators at North Locust. And we've been, again, triaging, if you will, all the elevators at all three garages, and we've been systematically trying to upgrade the elevators. And this is the next one that is due for service or due for repair. Next slide. Discretionary projects. Finally, onto discretionary projects. There's $2.5 million coming from our traffic impact fee and from grant money. Again, every cycle, we allocate funds towards non-signalized intersections and our bike master plan. So we try to do bull bouts and a variety of things in non-signalized intersections that help pedestrian movement. There is $1.5 million in this budget that is a grant for Safe Routes to BART. We're not sure if we will get that grant or not. It's money that came from Measure RR. And if we are successful, it'll provide for improvements around the BART station and, again, pedestrian access to BART. The other thing that's on here is our traffic monitoring and communication. It's an extension of our master fiber plan, running fiber further east on Ignatius. And I think that's it. Next slide. The last category on discretionary projects, and it's in our parks and open space. We have, again, Park in Loue funds for this, and then also Prop 68 was a one-time grant that came from that proposition of $200,000. So we're looking to do, you might recall, we did a, basically, we formed a committee, and we had neighbors from the Alma Park area and staff, and we looked at doing a mini-master plan, if you will, of Alma Park. And so we're proposing that we do the first phase of that project, and we were proposing $50,000 be allocated. We also have some diversion incentive funds that would go to Alma Park also for recycled-type products. So we would propose to spend about $100,000 in Alma Park. And then we talked about this a little bit tonight during the operating budget, but we're looking to spend $100,000 in open space improvements for some trail upgrades. And next slide. That was really fast. We're on to the recommendation. We're asking that you review and provide any feedback for this fiscal year 21 capital budget. Hopefully, I didn't go too fast.
Fine. Does council have any questions? Looking at my questionnaires. Mayor Pertham?
I have a question. This is really more general, and I'm not quite sure who would answer it. Perhaps it's Heather, perhaps it's Dan. But because there's so much discussion regarding the overall budget, there may be a lot of people that don't understand the difference between the general budget and the capital budget, and why are we talking about reductions in one and expenditures in the other? And maybe we can just get a brief overview for everybody for the record of why there's the difference here and how we're evaluating them differently.
All right. Dan, you want to take that?
You, but I wasn't on the monitor. Yeah, I mean, the short version is that, you know, effectively for accounting and municipal fund budgeting, if you will, we try to carve out the capital projects into a separate fund. They do have separate revenue sources, and they oftentimes last several years. So, you know, we don't start and end a capital project neatly in one fiscal year. And so some of these projects will carry for multiple years, require funding for multiple years. Additionally, most, if not all, of these projects, certainly the vast majority, need to be depreciated and tracked for those purposes as well, so we try to segregate. So, you know, put more simply, in terms of the city's budget, there are basically four main buckets, if you will, or funds. One being the general fund, another being the parking fund, this one, the capital budgets fund, and then also our Boundary Old Golf course, are very distinct operations that have very distinct revenue sources and different purposes. So they're segregated, if you will. And a lot of this money that we receive from the state or the federal government's support the infrastructure can only be used for those purposes. We don't have the option of allocating that over to the operating budget to help pay for staffing costs or pay for anything else. It's very restricted to infrastructure and in many cases to roads.
Thank you.
Hi, all right. Councilmember Francois, his hand up. Is that the case?
Thank you, Mayor. Heather, I was wondering if you can elaborate just on one particular capital project. It was the Intelligent Transportation System. It was the intelligent transportation system for some of the cross, the north-south, crosstown streets.
Yes, I meant to touch on that. Sorry, that was on one of the slides. Basically, that is to provide us better data collection. So it's not a smart system like we have on Ignatia where we can synchronize the signals. It's more from a data perspective. It does provide us information that we can use later for timing the signals, but it's just a way for us to collect data.
Good. And then I saw that they, I appreciate that this went through the PROS Commission and the Transportation Commission. General responses to their comments, have they been addressed or how have they been worked into the report?
Yeah, we had general support from the Park and Recreation, Open Space, the PROS Commissions. There was one of the commissioners that asked for a few more projects. It's not that they're not good projects. It's just going back to, again, that comment that I made with the Year Parksure Future. We were really trying to have a real minimalist capital budget with Park in Lou funds right now because we're trying to hold the majority of our Park in Lou funding for either the Park Swim Center or one of the other projects that comes out of the Year Parksure Future. And even though we're not doing Your Parksure Future, we know we have that need.
And then just finally, this is a broader question, maybe that I just want to make sure that we've, because it seems like this capital budget reflects some money from our operating budget, but it also has gas tax money and Measure J money and park fee money. Have we made sure we've gone through and satisfied ourselves that we can't pull from some other funds and diminish even more the impact on the general fund? I don't need an answer tonight, but I just, before we finally ink the budget, it'd be good to know that we've done that.
Yeah, there's a lot of things. Mainly, our buildings don't get a lot of special funding. The roads tend to get the Measure J or the gas tax and that kind of thing. But our buildings, our parking lots, some of those kind of assets really aren't a lot of grants out there. So we really do need to care for those assets. And, you know, if we don't care for them, then to that question that we had tonight earlier with the trails, it ends up compounding on itself. So if we had fully funded, and this isn't your question, I know, but I'll just put in a plug here. If we had all the money that our Maintenance Master Plan said that we needed for just this year, we would be asking for another additional $1 million. We're not doing any of the, and I forgot to say that on one of the slides, we're not doing any of the cosmetic-type improvements in this capital budget, like carpeting and, you know, those kind of things. We're really just caring for our outer envelope.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Going, going, gone. Now open this for public comment.
Hattie Mitchell?
Hey, Patty.
Hi, I'm still here. It's late. I am commenting specifically on the capital budget and really inquiring about Second Avenue. As many of you know, I was a part of Larky Park Neighbors United, and we had brought up the condition of Second Avenue several times in our discussions of the development on North Main. Second Avenue is a primary egress and ingress into the Larky Park neighborhood. Between North Main and Buena Vista is access to Larky Park, the Larky Pool, those tennis courts that are being resurfaced, the Lindsay Wildlife Museum. And that road is incredibly unsafe, unsightly, and it's really uncared for. There are no sidewalks, there's no lighting. It has blind entrances and exits. It's really a roller coaster ride of varying widths and dangerous and full of potholes. And so as I look at the capital improvements that are being planned, clearly, all kinds of infrastructure is needed. But I wonder how we get attention for Second Avenue because we've been asking for it for several years. That's my comment.
Thank you. There is no other public comment? Does anybody have an answer to offer her?
Well, you want me to try? I mean, she's, I would say the road isn't dangerous, but there are enhancements that could be done, and such as sidewalks. We have, we don't have a lot of money for sidewalks. The one way that we install sidewalks generally is through grants. And that is from like a Safe Routes to schools or Safe Routes to transportation or infrastructure such as BART. And so sidewalks sometimes can also even be built by the property owners. So that's one way where they can come together and form a district, a SESMA district, and tax themselves to build sidewalks. But I think Second Avenue does need a holistic look at what improvements we could do out there. I'm not sure where it is in terms of the paving schedule. It might need some paving, but it hasn't come up in our paving schedule to be paved, at least in this cycle.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So we have a large number of streets, residential streets in Walnut Creek that were built, where the housing was built pre-World War II or just post-World War II and before we started having, seeing subdivisions. Second Avenue seems to be in that ilk, as is Stewart, wherever one of us lives, and my street. What, I mean, just to reiterate, the city doesn't build residential sidewalks unless there is grant funding. And the grant funding comes for Safe Routes to School, which is why, close to the Larky neighborhood, along Buena Vista Avenue and Alvarado, we had some, in San Juan, we had some sidewalk improvements because of the routes to Buena Vista School. So is there any, other than, I mean, I can remember being told this 30 years ago myself because I asked about it when I first moved to Walnut Creek. The answer was, well, you can get your neighbors to help you fund sidewalks. But other than that, are there funding sources for sidewalks in communities like ours, other than Safe Routes to School or transportation?
Not to my knowledge, there really isn't. That's the difficulty, and it's hard when, you know, there's just not a lot of those kind of funds out there. So like you said, Safe Routes to School, that's easy because it's not easy, but it's easier. The other thing is, when you pool together your neighborhood, a lot of times, your neighbors aren't in agreement on whether they want sidewalks or not. So it's an interesting conundrum. Some of them don't want sidewalks. Sometimes sidewalks to build them, they take quite a bit of right-of-way, which approaches into the people's frontage. So it is difficult to install sidewalks. It's not as easy as you might think.
Hey, thank you. I still see a one, is that because she didn't take her hand out? Yeah. That being the case, I believe that, oh, I've lost a secret. There were no written reports either?
No, no written public comments.
Okay, so we're finished with public comment. To council, are there any comments about the acceptance of the improvement budget?
I'll just start by saying thank you to staff. I know it's harder to do a one-year capital budget when we're so used to doing two-year budget. And our Capital Improvement Program is in two-year cycles. So this must have felt odd, even when we thought we were going to have a lot of money. And then to have this sudden impact on our budgets, I truly appreciate not only the hard work, but the more conservative approach and the conservation of some of this funding, particularly gas tax-related funds, which may or may not actually stream in at the levels that they were originally predicted because people are not driving as much. So thank you to all the staff, and I'm supportive of the projects that have been proposed.
Hey, anybody else want to make a comment? Or should we just?
I will agree with that. I appreciate what we hear on, at the Finance Committee as well, and all the questions that we had then, which were then brought up, we're to hear. And I'm glad there's still projects to be done.
Hey. So I'm, this is one of those ones where we're receiving the information and giving an opinion about what we're changing. I have not heard anybody say anything other than we are happy to accept it as presented. And I will ask the council to nod their heads in agreement. And I've got Matt, I've got Justin, Cindy, and Kevin, and I'm nodding too. It's, thank you very much for that, Heather. Thank you very much for everybody's patience. We got through what we needed to get through. And it is my great relief to adjourn this City Council special meeting. And we'll see you at the next regular meeting on July 7th. Thank you very much, everybody. Goodbye.